Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. I apologize, we're starting just a few minutes late. I think everybody's just still visiting because we haven't seen each other for two months. So I'd like to reconvene to open session for the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education, being August 18th, 2021, at 7:05. We have already established that we have the quorum. I would like to remind everybody to silence their cell phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America. Thank you. So first item of business this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular unclosed session meetings of June 16th, 2021. Can I have a motion and a second? Our motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, oh, sorry, are there any amendments to the minutes or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. Next item is to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $226,000, 665.28 in June, and $409,585.36 in July. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jeff regarding the bills? No? Okay. And thank you for laying it out so clearly between one month for the next. It made it a lot easier for us, our first time around. Okay. If we're ready to vote, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boosdy?
Here.
But yes, yeah, or no?
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoi?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes. The bills are paid. So next item is a PTA report. Do we have anybody representing the PTA reporting? Oh, hi.
Sorry, good evening. I'm Stephen Ladena. I'm one of the co-presidents of the PTA. Thank you for having us here tonight. We hope to be here every, at every board meeting. One of us or one of the other officers will be here for the presentation for the report. Before I got, wanted to get started, I wanted to thank the board, the administration, the teachers, all the staff, for all the hard work they did last year to get us through. I know it was a very challenging school year for all of you and for the students, for the families. Thank you for doing your part for making that as best as possible. And I know you worked hard, everybody's worked hard to try to do that this year as everybody starts to come back. We also wanted to thank Erin Mohip and Amy Lichtman, who were the co-presidents the previous two years, for all the work they did for the PTA and getting us to this point. We have met with the administration to try to set up different events for this school year, kind of trying to go back as best as possible to what we did before, knowing that with everything going on, that might have to change. We might have to adapt some things or completely not do things depending on what we're, what we're advised to do or told to do. And we're ready to do that and work with the administration, making sure that our students and our families, when they are here for certain events, that the PTA is in charge of, that we're following the rules that the state and the school has set for us and for everybody. Some of the events that we're trying to plan for this year are similar to the ones we had before, the Connect for Respect 5K coming in September, the PTA Halloween Party, the Winter Dance in Bingo, Multicultural Night, the Book Fair, different PTA benefit nights at local restaurants, classroom parties and different events in the spring for teacher support staff and eighth graders. A lot of the same things that we've been doing in the past. Hopefully, we can get back to doing them again, again, depending on what happens in the coming school year. Also, at the end of last year, there was a new PTA Equity Committee that was, was approved by the PTA that we're hoping this group can work with the soon-to-be-appointed Director of Community and Student Engagement to work with parents and families and students on this important topic of equity and diversity and inclusion. That's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Well, good luck with all your plans. Okay, so school activity report. Does anybody from the board or administration have good news to share?
I just wanted to share, I saw walking around the neighborhood and driving the Welcome kindergarten signs on the yards. I thought that was really, really sweet and I hope that, and I guess there was some feedback already that the families really loved it and the kids are so excited. So I like that.
I saw those too. Great, great addition to our repertoire.
That was our primary principle in the kindergarten team's idea. So they, they made it happen. They were delivering signs, I think, trying to sneak signs onto yards, but that didn't always happen. Kind of a, just a cute story. One of the future kindergarteners came by school to deliver a handwritten thank you note to Mrs. Larkin, which was really sweet and he was really excited to start school before the sign, but now he's really excited. So it was, it was pretty sweet, but thank you. It's, it's those creative ideas that we so appreciate. And thank you to the board for letting us just run with things like that. But yeah, I think it brought, you know, smiles to many faces, whether you had a kindergartner or not. So, great job, everybody.
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. The Fairview Sports Camp was a huge hit for a lot of kids. So if we can keep doing that, that was a great, way to get them out, but not like a full-fledged, full day. And it's for middle schoolers and it was a nice sort of rite of passage, like, oh, I'm old enough to get to do this. So it was fun. And the pair, the new family orientation and the new family connections. I heard a lot of community members meeting new families that have moved in and getting excited about planning things and showing them around. And I just think, having been a family that moved when I was young, it was, it's a great thing that we do. So I think the new family orientation was a big hit despite the rain. I think it went really well.
Okay, thank you. That's better. The Gwendolyn Brooks Youth Poetry Awards held in the city and it's through the Illinois Humanities Council. So over 360 entries were submitted to the program and we had four Fairview winners. A fourth grade winner, a fifth grade winner, a seventh and eighth grade winner. That's great, yeah. It's awesome. And I'm sure I can pass along Dr. Whitaker, the actual entries, we have those. And there's an award assembly this weekend on Saturday that's virtual. I've gone in the past in person. It's an amazing experience for kids. They go to the event and read their poems in front of a pretty large group. And we also had two honorable mentions at two of those grade levels as well. So of the 360-plus entries, we had six Fairview students recognized. So that was really the exciting news that, that our students got this summer.
Excellent.
And then I'd just like to share with the board, on your tables, we're very excited. These brand-new iPads for K-1, one-to-one with what's called the Logitech Cran. It is a enhanced stylus, sort of like the Apple pencil, for a lot of the fine motor skills that we're hoping will, it will better the students with that. But these are brand-new for our K-1. We found that iPads are much better for those grade levels and more appropriate. So we just wanted to share with the board what that all looks like.
I do want to add, I had a kindergartner who had iPad last year and it was a lifesaver. I think it was great.
Great. Good move then. Anyone else? I just have one small extra thing to add. We said goodbye to Gloria a couple of months ago, but I wanted to say welcome to Drew, who is out there somewhere. Thank you, Drew. Drew Tait Sabres has taken over as Cindy's assistant and her role is pretty pivotal for us of the board. All, all this stuff that I read every month, that all comes from Drew. So, thank you, Drew. We look forward to working with you and welcome. And I'm sure we'll be getting you up and running. I, I know it's a baptism by fire at the beginning of the school year, but it's like, I'm sure we're going to be in very good hands with you. Thank you. Okie dokie. So if we're done with those, we'll move on to administrative reports. Superintendent's report, please.
Sure, thank you. In the board packet was the report for August. I will just hit a few highlights. This summer, we have tried to continue to communicate well, both with the board and with the community, about our plans for returning to school. As you would suspect, those plans have continued to evolve as we receive new guidance and as things continue to change. I'm going to circle back to that after I get through the rest of this report because there are a few things we need to discuss in terms of that back-to-school plan. I, the district hosted the Village of Skokie's Police Test. Annually, they bring candidates to take a test to see if they qualify to become police officers. And so just sort of mutual collaboration, we had individuals come in on a Saturday morning and they took their test. The village is very grateful to the board for allowing them to use our space because it was large enough that they could spread and socially distance people. And we have a great parking lot, especially on a Saturday that was wide open. So thank you to the board for, for that. The past couple of months was filled with summer curriculum work. Our teachers and administrative staff have just done a great deal of planning, but also creating. I think this is one of the funnest parts about summer curriculum work is that our teachers have great ideas that maybe they don't have enough time in the school year when they're in front of children every single day, but they can take advantage of the summer and the board supports that work by providing compensation. I always say it's never enough because teachers, they just spend countless hours preparing and thinking about students and curriculum and projects. But it is nice to be able to provide some compensation towards that work. And we have some great projects that we are looking forward to sharing with you in the coming months. I hope to highlight some of those projects at board meetings, just so you can see the types of things that our staff are working on. I think it's one of those things that keeps us fresh. It is good to tap into those creativity and to be able to reflect in the summer months about their craft. And our staff do a wonderful job of that. We are continuing to work on grants for the federal government as well as for the state. Jeff and I work on a variety of grants together and we are in the process of submitting grants and collaborating with the private schools within our district boundaries to make sure that we are providing for their needs as well as we are required to do so. We have worked on the tentative budget, which you'll hear more about later this evening. The master facility plan has been consuming a lot of our, our time and thoughts in thinking about some, some great possibilities for our district going forward in terms of physical space. Personnel-wise, Nick and I frequently communicate over the summer. So appreciative to have that type of relationship where we can just impromptu get together and meet and talk about things that are going on and how things are affecting our staff community as well. We are, you know, continuing to monitor the planning for onboarding new employees. We have several new staff members coming onboard, which the board will be acting on later tonight as well. We are, I have spent some time investigating the SHIELD COVID testing program, which I'll loop back to when I talk about back-to-school. We held the Getting Ready Program, which was a two-week summer school program to try to help students ease some of that anxiety about returning to school, but also fill in some of those little gaps that they might have from the past year or just the fact that in summertime, kids aren't doing as much reading and, and thinking about schools. That program is a great way to kind of get their brains going again. So we're so happy we can continue to offer that. So I would like to, oh, finally, Casio de Silva is here. Casio comes to our September board meeting, our Director of Buildings and Grounds. And Casio and his team worked tirelessly through the summer. I always invite Casio to this meeting. This summer, he didn't have a tremendous number of new projects, but it's the ongoing maintenance that keeps the building just sparkling clean and fresh. We're refresh, we're, we are replacing carpeting on a regular basis. We're painting, filters, all of the systems, you know, get those preventative maintenance checks. And so he and his team do a great job and I'd just like to take this opportunity from, from myself and I'm sure I have the same sentiments of the board. Thank you, Casio. Thank you for all of your hard work. One thing most people don't know about Casio is he's been in the district for a long time and he knows this building inside and out, every nook and cranny, how everything works. I, I just don't know what we would do without him because it's, it's all up here. But it's just, we're so lucky to have an individual who's dedicated his career to being with us and staying with us here at Fairview and doing the work that he does, leading his team is, is just so important. Never more important than last year during COVID and keeping the facility exceptionally clean. And it took a lot of extra work to do so, but they really did a phenomenal job. So thank you, Casio. And now I would like to loop back to back-to-school planning. I have communicated with the community at large, the basic parameters. You know, currently, we are keeping an approach that is layered in our mitigation efforts. I kind of parallel this to school security where you have lots of different layers built into your processes and into your facilities to make sure people are safe. Same with our COVID mitigation strategies. All of the work that we did to our HVAC systems, our filters, our cleanings, the, the materials we use for cleaning, all of those are all remaining in place. With the children, the hand sanitizing, whether it be washing with soap and water or using the Purell prior to eating, when they come into the building, when they're leaving the building, coming in from recess, all of those pieces will remain in place. I know that we have heard a good amount of discussion in the community about the use of masks. It is my position to support the wearing of masks in our school because of the governor's mandate, as well as the recommendations from the CDC and all the various health organizations. And I say that because we had a very successful year of in-person learning last year. We had a very limited number of students who developed COVID. We had a very limited number of adults. We could count on one hand how many. And I believe that's because we had all of these mitigations in place and they worked. So my position at this time is that we would recommend that all students wear face masks. I know that's controversial and we can certainly discuss it. A second piece that I've been researching is the University of Illinois SHIELD Testing Program. It's a free COVID test. It is a saliva test, so it's non-invasive. They nickname it the drool in the tube test. And I would want the board's opinion on whether or not we should offer this on a voluntary basis to students and staff. I did survey our staff and 96% of the staff said that they would take advantage of that testing program. I don't know, again, how the community would feel about it, but sort of in the same vein as last year when we gave parents the option of remote or in-person learning, this would be another one of those things where parents could make a decision for their children. The test is free of charge to school districts. It seems like it would be something that we could put into motion. At this point in time, we would not be able to put it into motion for the first or second week of school because you have to have parents opt in or opt out. You have to provide an upload of data, all of which is done in a secure fashion, but it does take some setup time. So even if the board directed me to continue with trying to obtain that testing for our school district, it wouldn't be something that I foresee being able to begin in the next month or so. So that's something that I think we need, you know, I need some direction and some input on. Beyond that, our teachers are really excited and ready to roll. We understand that, you know, there may be quarantine at some point for some classes or for some students. We've gotten pretty good at contact tracing, so we hope to really tighten the number of children who are being identified as close contacts so that fewer children have to be removed from school. But in terms of quarantine, that's another reason why having an easily accessible COVID test could be helpful because if they're older students and they've been vaccinated, they can test through the quarantine so that they can stay in school. So there, there are benefits. There are disadvantages. Any sort of testing that you do at school takes students out of, you know, something else. So they, they would have to potentially have a shortened period of lunch or recess or something of that nature. We would have to manage it, which would be another thing for our team to, to, to do. But really, you know, wanting to open this up for board discussion because I know there is, there are a lot of feelings about these topics and want to be able to have that discussion with all of you and certainly answer any questions that you might have about the plan.
Cindy, can I ask, just to confirm, that the testing would be limited just to the students and teachers and staff? Right, it's not community testing?
Correct.
Yeah. And would the results be available within a day? What's that turnaround look like?
My understanding is it's within 48 hours.
Okay. Cindy, can you explain kind of the, the logistics of that? How that would work with Fairview if you've looked into that further with the teachers? Or is there a medical, or who does that responsibility fall on?
Sure. So from what I've learned in researching the program, it is intended to be fairly, fairly straightforward and low, a low level of requirements for the district to provide. They provide the personnel. They, once you upload your data, they manage the database. They manage the delivery to the lab to have the tests, test results determined. However, I'm not foolish enough to think that it would be that easy. You know, we would have to, you know, there are parameters with the test. You can't eat within an hour of, of doing the test. So we would probably have to do it in the morning time. You can pick two days a week. You can pick one day a week. So that's something that could be determined. You could, you could only have students participating in extracurricular activities and do the testing. So there's a wide range of ways in which you could do it. But I do think, you know, at this point, keeping it optional so that it's at the fingertips and it's a convenience for people who want it for their children or who want, or for the adults in the building who want it, rather than having to, you know, then potentially have symptoms of a cold in school and now you have to go to your provider and pediatrician and figure things out and, and get tested. Not to say that it's not a good idea to get your child checked out if they have any cold symptoms, but just trying to make things easier for our parent community and for our staff. There is no cost, like I said. For to manage everything internally, they would actually compensate us $9 per test, but we don't have the capacity to, to do it ourselves. So that wouldn't be something I'd be interested in. I would like to look into whether or not the testing could be conducted outside of school hours. So if parents wanted to participate, they could bring their child to school 15 minutes early. Something so that it's not interfering with the school day because that's, that's a concern to me as well. You know, there's just, there are a lot of details to all of this. And I guess what I'm asking from the board is, you know, generally, do you support the idea of, of providing this as an option? Or do you feel as if, you know, it's just not something that we should be getting involved in? Because I know there are those feelings. You know, just looking for some direction after I can try to answer as many questions that you might have.
I have a question. Did you ever get us, or maybe we can reach out to the fam, the community and see how they feel? I think that it should definitely be voluntary. And if the parents don't want to, to volunteer, just to have that option. And then just not disrupting the day. And maybe they can, I don't know if they can do it at home and bring their, their saliva with them and hand it in to the teacher in the morning, just to not disrupt their day?
I don't think that's an option. And I know other testing companies do provide that as an option, but with this one, I think they're trying to control the collection. And if they're going to support us, you know, they would do that on our site. But I don't see any reason why it couldn't be an after-school or a before-school type of situation. I did ask the Skokie Health Department if they are providing COVID testing because that would seem like a really easy alternative rather than doing it at school. But they are not offering COVID testing. They're only offering the vaccinations.
I, I like the idea that the teachers, the teachers feel comfortable and they want to do this. And 96% feel like they would like to offer this to school. As a board member, I'd like to support them. And if it is optional, that means the parents that don't want to utilize the service don't need to. But the ones that do, it just makes life a little bit easier. And of course, you're addressing the issue about kids missing school. So I would be personally in favor of that.
I have a question. With either a staff member or a parent that opts into it, is that then essentially signing up for regular testing? Or is it more on an ad hoc basis?
For the students, I would say that we would want to do a regular testing. One of the benefits is to identify an asymptomatic student who's carrying COVID so that that student can then be identified and quarantined. So I would suggest that for students, it should be a regular testing. I did ask the question, if we don't have 100% participation, does it, does that really benefit us to have a few kids testing and maybe a few kids not? And they said, any testing is better than no testing. And, you know, that you might catch a few asymptomatic positive kids is a better situation than not catching any. But it also would benefit families, especially those who have children old enough to have received the vaccine. It would benefit them if their child becomes a close contact at school. That child could test out of quarantine and the testing requirement is on day one, day three, day five, day seven. So there's at least four tests that the family would have to secure for their child to be able to keep them in school. So to me, that's a convenience to offer it here. You know, in addition for our teachers, same thing. The majority of our teachers, over 90% of our teachers have been vaccinated. They still could become a close contact and so they too would be subject to quarantine. But this would provide them that convenience of right here at the building, on their planning time, on their lunch break, to be able to try to test through the quarantine period. So I do think that that's of benefit to people who wanted to take advantage of that.
The only downfall is it's a 48-hour turnaround. And you can go to local areas and get the rapid test as well, which would, you would get it done that day.
True.
I do know the, the, there's like a Coronavirus Response Act that is nationwide. There's no cost to any COVID test in multiple facilities, so.
Yeah. Again, I think as adults, we all have our way of options with all of this. And, you know, some parents may not want their child to be subjected to testing at school, but then they're making that decision that if their child is a close contact, they're going to have to, you know, and we'll help them, of course. We'll direct them in the right, you know, way to wherever is most convenient, but then that's going to be their responsibility. So.
I'm going to jump in with just a couple of things I like that we're investigating this and potentially offering it. As a school-based person who did have testing available onsite last year, I can just speak to the fact that the, the staff opted in to be tested and then I was on a routine testing schedule. It gave me just peace of mind, frankly, going to a home with an unvaccinated kid. I felt a little better about that. But then the students who opted in, I want to say it was like a 30-second, like it became part of their routine going down to the lunchroom. Like they'd go to the lunchroom, they'd swing in, get their test done and go to lunch. So it, it just did not, and, and that was not the saliva test. That was a nose swab. And it, it didn't really affect the instruction, like the pacing of the day didn't seem that off. And groups of kids... And groups of kids who some opted in and some did not, it was a non-issue. It was like, you go in this lane, I go in this lane, and then we meet at the table for lunch. It became very, you know, it just was not that, that big of a deal to kids, I don't think. But as adults in the building, and I think parents, just liked having that option. As a working mom, if I got a call that my kid was symptomatic or something like, it helps me to know I don't have to get him every three days somewhere to test out. So as working parents, it really helps me to say, Fairview's got it covered. But I also like the opportunity that if you don't need that convenience, you don't have to sign up for it. We're not making anyone do anything. So I think unless we find out something about the shield process that you are not comfortable with, it sounds like everything is okay at this point. I'm curious about like, I mean, I'm sure there's HIPAA and stuff, but who collects the data and where does it go? Is that on Patrick? Does he input, you know what I, it sounds like they staff.
They do, but there would be responsibilities for our tech department, Patrick specifically. And, oh, there he is. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of details. And I guess, you know, I'm just looking for some general consensus. Do you want me to continue down that pathway of, you know, asking parents if they want to opt their child in to this? You minimally have to have 100 testing. And so with my staff survey results alone, I think we could do it, if only our staff did it.
Okay.
You know, and that would be another option, although I think it would feel a little unfair. You know, we could offer it to the staff only. But, you know, if we're going to offer it to the staff, why not offer it to others? You know, I think the children deserve the opportunity and their parents deserve the opportunity as well. So I just, you know, didn't want to go down this road, because I know there are strong feelings on both sides of this and thought that the board should weigh in on it.
I think if you do a survey, get the parental community's thoughts on it. But I think just to make it clear that it is 48 hours. So if you are looking for a quicker, let's just say they were exposed or they have cold-like symptoms, it will take two days for you to get that result. It's not going to be within that day. So what do you do for those next two days?
I was thinking, what you were saying, getting community input, that surely would just be whether they sign up for it or not. If they want to sign up for it, it means they're in, they're in favor of it. And if they don't, they don't. Would you not agree?
I'm sorry, it's hard to
I'm just saying that you were talking about gaining the opinion of the community as to whether they wanted it or not.
Yeah, the teachers want it, which is great.
Clearly do, but I was thinking, in terms of asking the community, you're effectively asking them when you're offering the test. So if they agree with having a test, then they'll sign the student up. And if they don't agree with the test, then they won't.
Yes.
So there's no real need for a natural communication. It's just about offering it and either they take it or they don't.
I think there's a little bit of value to understanding if there's critical mass in the community, one way or the other. Does, does the majority of the community, are they in favor of the test? Are they not in favor of the test? You know, I'd be a little bit concerned with, does it create tension between students on both sides? You know, if one, if one student is opting in while another student is opting out, you know, how is that perceived to be interesting and interested in knowing, you know, how other, other schools handle that?
Did you, and you were saying that that didn't seem to be a problem?
I just have a small sampling population of kids, but it didn't, it never came up about who was tested, who wasn't tested. The kids don't talk about it. They're more concerned about like, what's going to happen at recess? That's my experience as a teacher, I never heard the students talking about it. They knew, they knew if they were being tested or not, so I didn't even have to keep track of it. So as a teacher, I found it kind of a non-issue. My concern is, I mean, I don't have any concerns with offering the test. I think anything optional is fine.
I agree with Mary Ann that by asking the parents whether they want to have their child tested is giving them the option to utilize service, right? So it's not a mandate, it's not forcing. Every parent has a choice, but the ones that want it and value it can do it this way if they want to. You know, I feel like making it optional and before school or after school is kind of a good way of, you know, not cutting in, not making a mandate, not making it public even, whether who's getting tested or not. And it makes like, I'm a working mom. And so just thinking of other working moms and dads out there, it would be a lot easier for us to manage that.
And I just jumped on the website real quick, the SHIELD website. And in terms of, it says, "Fast notification, current notification time for the saliva test is less than 24 hours, compared to a two-to-three-day turnaround time for most currently available tests." So I think they've improved their turnaround time.
I wanted to mention, so the teachers, I can understand, they make their choice as an adult, they're there for the procedure. They're, you know, like I said, over the age of 18, they're an adult. But as, you know, having a young child and not being present as a parent, I think there's a different perspective with this test being done at school. Like I want to
Well, the parents making the decision for the child to do.
Yeah, but and the medical choices as a parent is evident in the school from, you know, one side or the other, that, you know, if it was done maybe before school or after school, there's a difference. But, I mean, I had a kindergarten last year talking about political stuff, telling me political conversations in class. And I was like, what? So I do think kids still have these discussions, surprisingly.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think kids do have conversations. I think our older students are going to be talking about whether they're vaccinated or not. And we're going to need to, you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to reinforce, you know, being respectful of each other's, you know, points of view. And, you know, if it turns into something that makes someone feel bad, we're going to consider it bullying or harassment, and there's going to be consequences for that. You know, when we were talking about masks way back at the beginning of the summer, you know, the struggle with keeping it optional for those who are vaccinated at that point was then you have some kids who are wearing masks and some kids who aren't, and there's going to be tensions. And kids are going to make fun of each other and they're going to be hard on each other. And, you know, that is not what we stand for here at Fairview. And that's the message, whether it be masks or any other, any other issue. And we've talked about a lot of them here at this board table. You know, I think that's the time for teachers to intervene and to use it as that moment to, you know, guide children in the, in the right direction and make sure that, you know, conversations are respectful. They don't have to agree, they can have their own opinion. But we're not going to allow it to turn into something else. So this is why I wanted to have the discussion, because, you know, I understand, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying. You know, we can try to put this together and have it be as discreet as possible. I think the before-after-school option is a great one, because, you know, I'm very protective of our instructional time at school. I hate losing a single minute. You know, and that might be the best way to do it discreetly. So it's not in a situation where other kids are seeing it. But, you know, I can't promise that. They still may talk about it, you know, so.
I mean, personally, I could, I could support it if it was before or after school and if parents opt in to the program. I think having it happen during, during instructional time or even during free time where, where, where children see each other going in for testing could create opportunities for division. I think there's a little bit, you, you, you have opportunity for tension between kids there. And I understand there's anti-bullying policies, but as we all know, a lot of times that goes unreported by the children. So I'd rather, I'd rather see it happen discreetly. But could support it in that manner.
So I, I've done as much research as I can. I've completed as much information as I can for the SHIELD testing. The next step is that I have to gain consent from anyone who wants their child or any adult who wants to participate. I can't set up, you know, the times, I can't, I can't go on to that next step until we kind of cross that threshold. So am I hearing from the group that you're comfortable with, you know, trying to ascertain how many people would be interested in opting in? And that if then we can schedule it before or after school, that that would be a go? Is that sort of?
My opinion is definitely move ahead with it, establish how, well, you already have with the staff, you said, but establish from the community how many people want to do it. In terms of the logistics of, in an ideal world, having it either before or after school, I would not want that to be a constraint. I would not want it to be that because there's too many and doing it before or after school is impossible, so therefore we don't do it. I certainly wouldn't want to see it go that far. That might be the ideal, Sargon, I do understand what you're saying, but I, I wouldn't want it to be the deal breaker, if you sort of mean.
Wouldn't a first step be just understanding how many, how many parents want to opt in?
Absolutely.
So maybe we take that as a, as an opportunity to see how much interest there is within the community, see who opts in, and we, we can decide on the next steps from there.
Well, except obviously, if you're going to be implementing this in the next few weeks, Cindy's going to be making these decisions before we get to meet again. But, so I think really she's looking, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm looking, you're looking for the
I mean, if nothing else, I'd like to at least start with the staff. We know where they stand, they're adults, they can make these decisions. It's no interference to their job responsibilities. If nothing else, I believe we can hit the minimum 100 with our staff. And that would buy us some time to then roll it out to the parents, explain it, because they need to know what they're opting in or out of. And then, you know, get a better handle on how many would be interested. I just don't want, I don't want there to be an appearance of we're doing something for our staff that we're not providing to our students. But it also would allow us to implement this, kind of see how it works, test it out on the adults first before we bring the students into the mix. So there could be advantages to doing it that way. So if that's, does that work for everybody? Start with the adults, obtain, understand what the interest level is in the community for students. And then we know what kind of numbers we're dealing with. You know, if we have 600 students that want to be tested, we're not going to have enough time before or after school to do that. So that, that's sort of, you know, we find that out.
Yeah. But Cindy, there might be 20 kids that want to be tested and should be offered that if they want to, if their parents want to. And I don't want the fact that some parents are worried about kids getting, bullying each other to affect a person's health, livelihood, right? So I think we need to prioritize what's actually important, life, over like, oh, my kid might get, somebody might say to my kid, you didn't get vaccinated or you didn't get tested today. You know, I get that, but worse bullying happens on our playground that we are, some of us are aware of and some are not. But I think this should be a really important priority. And I think it is for our teachers, our staff, clearly you as well. So I want to make sure that if you do this, like Mary Ann said, if you can do it before or after, great. But I don't, I don't want it to be a deal breaker, because it is important to me and I think it's important to a lot of other people.
Yeah, I don't want to downplay bullying. I mean, we, we as parents don't have control over what happens on the playground. We as parents don't have control of what happens in the classroom. We as parents have control over whether we want to take our children to go get COVID tested. So that is an opportunity that we have.
Yep.
I understand it becomes a little more convenient. But I think, I think as a, I think as a first step, taking the action of, as Cindy suggested, taking the action of implementing it with her teachers, may be a good first step in understanding, you know, how it would play out with the rest of the students.
You've been quiet, Erin. Did you have anything to add?
No, I, I think, I agree absolutely with Shereen. If this is something that the teachers have spoken and the teachers want, we should absolutely support that. And I think if then this organization is going to be in the building and it's free of charge, it, I would say opening, I think, opening it up to the students and families for those who want it. I think that that makes a lot of sense. I can understand the before-after-school, for me personally, that, that wouldn't be a deal breaker. But, but I, but I understand those arguments. And I think whatever is the, the sort of the best, most efficient way that we can implement it for as many people as are interested in it, I think that's what we should do.
You have your direction?
Yeah, and I'm hearing, I do hear the concerns that are being expressed by, you know, board members. And I know you're talking with your friends and neighbors too. And I, I know that our staff are very good about intervening. You know, those concerns that you're hearing, we can address this directly and point staff in the right direction if they're hearing students having these discussions about vaccines, et cetera. You know, we have such a wonderful opportunity with the start of a new school year and to kind of reestablish what we expect and how we all behave when we're in the school together on a, you know, a wide variety of topics. And so we're going to take advantage of that opportunity. And this could certainly be just one more of those. But I've definitely heard, you know, what the board members have had to say. I will take the next steps to try to get this ball rolling. And we'll see, you know, what the community thinks. We'll try to schedule it at a time where it's not a loss of instructional time and so that it can be, you know, more, you know, private for the students. But, you know, there's still always that opportunity, they're going to talk about it. So I don't know if you want to do a straw poll around the table or if you feel like you have consensus?
I feel like we have, but if you want to just firm things up with a straw poll, I'm happy to do that. I would like you to proceed with investigating it for the teachers and with a view to, to then communicate that to the community and get their opinion and with a view to then offering it to students as well. That's my opinion, if you want to. Anyone else?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I say in real fair view.
Great. That was you. Sorry, it's hard with us, I couldn't tell which you spoke, you spoke.
Right, yeah. So just to clarify, you're starting with the teachers? And then we're going to survey the parents and then make a decision at the next board meeting? Is that correct?
No, that's why I'm glad we were doing this, because I don't want any confusion. What I was hearing the board say was absolutely, you know, the teachers, you know, we already know we have the teachers who are interested and opt in, provide it to them, provide it, information, more detailed information with a plan to the community and ask, you know, either they opt in or they opt out. And for those who opt in, provide the testing to them with the caveat that if we can do it before or after school, that would be better. If we can do it in a more private way, that would be better. You know, but to offer it to any students who want to take advantage of it.
Thank you, Cindy. You said it much better than I did. Thank you. That's what I would agree with. Anyone else? I support it.
I agree.
I think you have your consensus.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your explanation, appreciate it.
Sure. So that concludes
That concludes your report?
The report, yes.
I think that's your longest one yet. Okay, so now we're, I'm moving on to the other administrative report, which is regarding our master, I can't even say it, master facility planning update from our friends at Archon.
So, yes, we have another exciting presentation from our architects. We have, who's going to, who's going to start? George?
I'm going to say hi and then go back there real quick. So you get a little moment of pausing until this
Okay, he's going to go behind the curtain and get our presentation up. And it looks like Mr. Huck is coming to the mic.
Okay, so while George is setting us up for the screen behind you here, just want to thank you for another opportunity to come and present to you. We're going to walk you through the things that we've been doing since the last time that we met. There were a couple of specific things that you asked us to come back to you with responses on. We've got those things we'd like to present to you. And then we want to share with you some of the, the things that it might happen as we move forward, what the next steps are. In a overall summary, tonight is about us sharing with you the long-term roadmap, the master plan. It's not about approving specific projects to move forward out of that master plan yet. There's work that has to happen behind the scenes before we get to that step. Everything from how is it going to get constructed, how is it going to get funded? How is it going to, all those things have to be a piece that will come back to you after this. Tonight is really about this, this roadmap and making sure that you're comfortable with this as a long-term master plan.
So I could kind of hear back there and he stole probably three-quarters of my thunder. So I will get into a little bit of the slides that I, but those stalled perfectly well. Thanks for having us here again tonight. I know it's been about a month since we were last here. And a lot has happened since, since our last meeting. I know if you recall, when we came here looking at the master plan options last month, we had three, three options.
uh, we had three three options that were presented. We kind of weighed the pluses and minuses. And as we kind of talked through them, we ended with a a direction that the board gave us to pursue looking further into that on option B that we're going to talk about tonight. Um, but what what did looking into mean? Uh, over over the last month, we we brought a civil engineer on board to uh, start analyzing the site. I know it big, when we were using kind of the fat pen approach, we were looking at where things should be situated, how they should be organized, but really wanted to get the logistics behind it, the feasibility of it. And uh, our engineer that came on board started looking at different things. Uh, existing site conditions, existing storm lines, sanitary, uh, water lines that are on the site, how how the site is designed to make sure that we don't have some glaring conflicts that when we come to this table today and we say, I'm sorry, everything we showed you didn't work, right? We didn't want that to happen. We want to make sure we came to you to to give you more affirmation of the design that we've been showing you, the master plan, it is feasible. So they worked through those pieces. The other part of it, and another very important piece, was looking at the village of Skokie and setting up a meeting with the the planning department and kind of walking them through the project, uh, through the through the master plan and making sure they understand it and see if there are any problems they see with it, address any concerns they might have. And we had a really good conversation with them. Uh, it was at the end of, at the end of July, where um, we had, we had oh, the twentieth, actually, uh, where we 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 walked through the initial concept plan for the option B, uh, asked a couple of questions. They they walked us through different uh, ideas from, or different concerns they had. One was making sure that we had the appropriate setbacks off of Laramie. Make sure we 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 stayed in line with the existing two-story addition, that we're not projecting further out towards the street to make sure that we're not going for any variances. Simplify the zoning process. Uh, they looked at the site circulation and parking. That was another key one to make sure that uh, as we analyze the site, we provide the correct amount of parking stalls. If we potentially show you an option that grows your parking lot from, I think it's eighty-nine to a hundred and plus hundred twenty stalls, is that the right amount? Uh, so that that is some of the homework they assigned our way to uh, to make sure we dug through and make sure that it was addressed on the master plan. So as we further develop it, or we go to the next steps, it it addresses it correctly. Uh, as we came out of that meeting, we had, we wanted to make sure we we circled back to the community one more time. Uh, we had our second community meeting that we got to present to in early August. I think one of the members out here in the corner, same exact where he started before we moved him forward. Um, and and we we actually ran through the the stuff that we're going to show you tonight and and started asking the same types of questions, and we had a really good conversation and a real good analysis that came from that. And that brings us to tonight. Uh, if you, I think I heard you say about the massing, or did you not say it when I was up there? Uh, one of the tasks as we came out of this meeting, if you recall, the first question was, what's this going to look like, right? Uh, this is early. This is us looking at the man, the whole idea of tonight is to make sure that the master plan is appropriate for the school district. It ticks off all the 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 checkboxes. We dotted our i's, we crossed our t's from an overall plan. But what we also wanted to start doing is looking at initial concepts of what can that start looking like, so we could show you that today uh, of where we stand on early schematic designs. Uh, again, it's going to evolve many different ways from now until whenever these become projects, if they become projects. But at least we can give you kind of that that point of reference of what things can look like. And again, I think, believe Jeff mentioned that our goal tonight is to walk you through the master plan as far as a plan for the district to see if there's, as we address any concerns and have his commerce, answer questions that you feel comfortable and confident as a district that there's the plan you'd like to adopt. So the diagram you're seeing here is is part of our uh, civil engineer and us working together at looking at conflicts that we noticed on site or uh, ways that we can get around of existing systems on property. Uh, the color coding that you kind of see from the reds, greens and blues really was was kind of delineating all your different storm lines, sanitary lines and water lines that are uh, coming through your site. Uh, as you could see where we have that blue addition that we're showing, there's a lot going on there, right? Uh, a lot of lines that are heading towards Laramie. And as we first saw that, we were like, is that going to work? Is there is there issue concern? And talking through engineers, there there are ways that we would probably want to reroute all those lines from the south end of the property, which is the left, uh, to the north end of the property, which is that drive along the auditorium and kind of exiting onto Laramie. That was one of the first conversations we had on here with the village to make sure that they understood that, and that was making sense for them, because whatever we do on our site, it works in-house, but once it gets off our site and gets onto the city streets, we want to make sure that we are addressing it correctly and they don't stop us before we get too far, right? Uh, and that that open dialogue actually had a really good outcome. The other thing on that south addition that we were looking at for that south piece was the shape of it. Uh, originally, when, uh, last month when we were here, that shape was a little wider and and encroached much closer to those tennis courts and the playground. And we wanted to make sure that from a feasibility standpoint, we didn't want to damage either of those two pieces. So uh, there were some modifications made to the addition to bring it further away, to distance itself from that 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 tennis court, so we can maintain about, at least I think it was thirty-one and thirty-two feet uh, of distance between that built structure to those pieces. So at any time you would ever choose to do that, we would be able to maintain those two pieces, those, the playground and the tennis court without damaging anything. Uh, on the east end against Laramie, um, the, you could see that the blue addition, which is the other piece that came out of the front, which would be the two-story piece, uh, aligns exactly with the existing building to the north, which is the other two-story part, the middle school area. And uh, those are modifications that were made that you'll get to see as we get further in. Uh, in the back site that that we're still continuing to develop would be the the idea of uh, adding additional parking stalls, getting bus parking on there in the back corner, uh, looking at widening lanes to help alleviate circulation. And I know one of those topics came up last last month during the community meeting, and that is something that we're going to want to continue investigate from a site circulation perspective. Uh, that is a whole process that we want to make sure that we understand where pit, where traffic is going, how traffic is flowing on and around our property or the property. So that'll be something that evolves as we get deeper and deeper into it. But there, here's the initial stages of how that site could work. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to start talking about the plan, and then I'm going to go hide behind the curtain as I get the model ready, so.
Thank you. Okay, so one of the things I I do want to mention as George is walking back there. Um, the engineering firm, the civil engineering firm that we've hired as our consultant for uh, helping us with the master plan and ideally any projects that come out of the master plan, um, we specifically selected them for a number of reasons. Uh, it's Erickson Engineering, they're out of Grayslake. Uh, they were the engineers, civil engineers who worked on the two thousand additions here, the the addition in the front, the addition of the gym in the back. They also happen to be currently working with your neighbors immediately to your north on their master plan. And the third reason is because I've known those folks for twenty years. Uh, the president, Glenn Erickson, is a school, used to be a school board member in Grayslake. He understands schools. I felt, feel very comfortable with them and have worked, as I said, with them for twenty years very successfully, so. Uh, they really helped us understand some of the unique things from a historical perspective with your school. Some of the things that, you know, why you might have some issues with some drainage in that courtyard between the two thousand addition and the old building. How we might be able to solve that as part of this project. Uh, the fact that there is a underground water line from the uh, drinking fountain down there by the playground that runs right along the fences, that kind of thing, and how maybe we need to stay away from that. So those kinds of things started to help us shape this option. So this is exactly the same as the option B you saw last time with a couple of really, I would call them minor adjustments. As George mentioned, on the south end, we have changed the orientation of those large uh, pre-K and K classrooms to where their long dimension is going east-west, so from bottom to top, as opposed to north-south, left to right. That kept or allowed us to move a little bit further away from those tennis courts, avoid some of those uh, water lines that we really don't want to impact. Um, what that does is it sort of forces us to spread a little bit north and a little bit south, maybe more so than we initially had thought. Not a big though. Um, another piece that uh, we heard from the village about uh, staying back on the same property line or or at least along the same building line as the two thousand addition happens along Laramie with our new additions. You can see where George's cursor is. We've lined up the new and the old uh, to be in the same plane. Where before we had bumped out to where the current uh, east face of the existing library is. What that did is simply slide of orientation a little bit so that that addition extends just a little bit further to the to the south or to the left on your page. Same square footage, same number of plate, spaces, uh, same advantages of circulation being solved. All of those kinds of things are still happening. We've just basically taken a exact, we've taken a room that might have been in the long direction going east-west and rotated ninety degrees. That's essentially what it was. Uh, the other piece that we we wanted to talk about, if you remember, George started out by saying there's there's really three big things you asked to look at, the civil engineering piece, the uh, the village input, and then the question of what might this look like? Um, and we felt it was pretty important to study that, even though I think my answer to the question last time was that'll happen when we get projects. We had a little bit more conversation about that and felt that it was important to show you something so that you could say, yes, that fits within the parameters of what our expectations are for future projects. So we want to show you some three-dimensional things um, and how we're starting to address the uh, existing building. One of the things that you've got going on uh, on the existing building, that two thousand addition, is a very prominent, very nice, easily identifiable entry. It's that two-story glass space where the roof pitches up. It's like, uh, it's like, I think you told me it's like a gull's wing, right, Cindy?
A falcon.
Falcon wing, thank you. Uh, that's really nice, and we don't want to have our additions uh, in the master plan, anything that might happen down the road conflict with that. So one of the things we've done is we've sort of reshaped an area that we were calling a team area, which is right where George's cursor is there, and made it actually, it was essentially a widened corridor. And we actually made it a space, a room with a uh, oval sort of uh, exterior wall. And the idea is that we want to sort of defer to that entry, and we'll show you in the three-dimensional views here in a second. But we want to defer to that entry, let it stand on its own without us competing with that. And at the same time, address this idea that we're we're putting an addition on a major area of exterior uh, plaza that you have, and how might we be able to replace some of that uh, area with uh, with an opportunity for an outdoor learning space or an outdoor queuing space or just an outdoor hangout space. Um, so you'll see a little bit of that, and that's why that oval is right there. Uh, the the big thick black line represents the exterior line of the building at that point, so. With that, George is going to pull up um, one of the saw, oh, I'm sorry, one of the other things uh, he's he's giving me a reminder here. Uh, part of the conversations that we've had is to uh, to look at recreating one of the advantages your current library has, which is the ability for after-hours use directly accessed from the outside without it um, having to go, without people having to go through the rest of the building. At the same time, how might we have a space that's dedicated to uh, use after hours or by an outside source for um, uh, special ed type programs like an NTDSE pro, uh, program. And this classroom that we have that he's highlighting right there is in, is one of those extra bubble classrooms that we've talked about having um, as a special education space, which we think would be a really good candidate for that uh, NTDSE program. So you could access it from the outside. You could have a space right outside in front um, and without having to go through the main lobby if you chose to go that route. Likewise, the library could be accessed with some lock-off doors uh, to the hallways adjacent to it. So you could use the library after hours, again, without having the rest of the building open and exposed. Okay, so with that, we're going to show you our three-dimensional model. Uh, a huge caveat here, um, please uh, look at this for what it is. It's a study model. It's not a hundred percent accurate as far as where windows are, where uh, roof heights, things like that. But it's to give you a representation of the existing building on the site. So north is to your right. You can see the falcon wing on top of the the main entry. Uh, I think George just had his cursor on top of the existing library where the uh, the space right up in front. Um, the plaza is right there. Uh, the the track and the field are far beyond on the back side. So this gives you an idea, north is to the right, south is to your left. Okay, so the uh, next slide there, George. These are additions that we're proposing. The one on the south where his cursor is, that's the pre-K and kindergarten addition with a multipurpose or uh, assessment space, as we talked about for the little ones. Uh, that, uh, on that uh, back end there, it's close to the uh, the fields and the track. Um, you can see how we've now expanded the parking in the front uh, to give you more drop-off for the pre-K. And then the two-story addition, which is on the front of the building there. Uh, George, if you can put your cursor right on the main entry, that's the main entry. Everything to the right of that is your two thousand addition. Our proposed master plan would imply that you have an addition to the left, which is a two-story addition. And you can see how we're uh, starting to uh, have these two pieces feel like they are of similar language architecturally. This is that area that I talked about that's right outside the library. Uh, it is a, essentially a bench that follows along the curved wall there. Two-story of glass behind that, which would allow you to look into that library across the hallway. We could come up with an entry in this area, which would allow you to go into the library or for use by that uh, NTDSE space after hours without having to go through the rest of the building. Um, it gives you sort of a setback or void so that it's not sitting right out in front, competing with your really nice entry. This is if you were looking at it from street view. Again, your entry are the double doors to your right, your main entry. This is a, this uh, view of that that brick wall which extends above the roof line, and the area behind that would be what you would see through into the library.
Can I ask a quick question? Would would that be the main entry then to the right where students are entering and exiting school?
Where they do currently.
Yeah, that's your existing main entry and uh, that operation would stay essentially the same. Uh, and what George just did is he turned off the addition, so you can, what you see there is uh, if you do that again, George, do a little bit of a before and after. That's what you currently have, your existing. Uh, the solid piece there is the elevator on stair, and then the addition would uh, essentially be to the left of that. And again, we're not proposing that this is a final design by any means. We just wanted to give you a sense that we can make it look like it fits with the existing building and is very contextual to the existing building. Uh, not that you would ever have this view because you'd be in someone's backyard, but if you could, looking straight at the building, a head-on elevation, uh, you can see the materials and the way the detailing occurs on the two thousand addition. Everything to the, from the main entry to the right, and how we would carry those through and anything that happens on the left uh, in that two-story addition, we would try and extend that language through. So it would feel very, very um, fitting and very uh, contextual. Okay. So with that, what we wanted to do at this point is really open it up to you with, for any questions about the master plan overall. Um, uh, the massing that you see, the uh, uh, the plan, if you've had any thoughts since the last time we met with you. And if you had any questions about those those things that we've been doing in the meantime, such as the civil engineering study, our conversations with the village, and and this.
I have a question about um, if you look, sort of, I'm, it's hard to look at it and and talk, but um, directly behind the addition to the front, you can see that the roof is alternate. It it doesn't look like it does right now. It it's got a a new elevated pitch to it. Do you see the piece, I mean? Sort of gray-looking part. Is that new?
So the gray part that looks like, almost like a
Yeah.
That's existing. That's over your cafeteria and your art rooms.
That's existing.
That area, yeah.
That's not a change. I couldn't.
No, George, if you uh, rotate the models so that we're looking straight down and uh, just sort of walk your cursor around the addition that would be on the front of the building. So right where his cursor, oops. Just point to where the addition is on the front. Correct. All of that right there is the addition. Everything that you see, it's in a little bit darker of a shade of gray, is existing. All of that's existing. That's the two-story. That, where his cursor is, is the. That's the two story, that where his cursor is, is the new, the white roof. And then all of that behind it is existing.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was a new sort of a new roof.
No, it actually pops up like that and I'm not sure that this model is exactly, again, this is just a conceptual model, but.
I have been on the roof of this building and I know it's nowhere near straight and flat.
No, it is not. There are many, many.
Up a bit, around a bit, down a bit, along a bit, up a bit, it's crazy up there.
Um, my understanding is that that area was at one time used for other things other than what it's currently used for now. And I think right now it's the, the art rooms are in there.
Yeah.
So it, whenever it was built, it was built as a higher volume.
Got it.
That's the, that's the building piece you're talking about right there, yeah. Any other thoughts?
Is there any blacktop left out for the kids for basketball and?
Yeah, much like, much like the parking and site circulation and those kinds of things. That's one of the things we need to continue to study. The addition on the south end sits on where you currently have a lot of your blacktop. So what we've had conversations with the administration about, and we've had with our civil engineer, is identifying areas that it makes sense to put blacktop back. So maybe all of that green space isn't all green space, maybe some of it is blacktop. It might make sense to have that very close to the gyms. We've talked about having an outdoor learning space, a covered outdoor learning space. Where we put that, all of that I think will get developed at some point with the understanding that we still need to have those spaces, yes. So I apologize if we don't have that shown, I think it's something we're going to need to develop more with the district hand in hand.
But a question, it looks like from the, this plan is that on that south end, there's no more location for blacktop. It'd be in the back somewhere, correct?
That's pretty much correct, yes. You can see the, George, run your cursor over the addition. All of that's the addition. And then if you turn that off, George, I don't know if you can, from where you're standing, isolate that. That's pretty much where your blacktop is. So your blacktop is right to the south of the main gym. And it's to the south of, right up in there, that area. I think we're actually showing some grass in our model, but it's actually blacktoped in there. So those, that addition would sit on top of that, we're going to have to find a home for that blacktop or rethink, work with your, your administration to understand. Yeah, you can see there, there you go, those are the two blacktop spaces. How might we recreate those or is there something else that makes more sense now? You've been living with that blacktop for many, many years, is it still the right answer going forward?
Part of the next steps of this process will be to engage with, for example, our P E staff. You know, that track, how is it functioning for them? There's a basketball court within the, the track. There's also a, I think it's a long jump pit, I think that's what it would be called, like, do we still use that? Do we need that? Could that be a space where we built in some four square courts or something of that nature? But we'll want to bring our staff into those more detailed conversations, but also our students to have them weigh in on, you know, what do they use, what do they like the most? The Gaga pit is where the addition would be, that would have to be moved somewhere else because they like that. So that's sort of the next steps with this. And I think, you know, we feel pretty strongly about preserving as much green space as possible and playground space. So it could be blacktop or green, but that would sort of be the next steps to drill down on what the needs are of the kids and, and the staff who use those spaces.
We've been, we've been working for the past, I'm going to call it four or five years with Northbrook School District thirty, their replacement middle school, but also at their two primary schools. And big conversations have been about just this. They've had blacktop areas, they're comfortable with those. The teachers know what they're going to do when the students are out there. As we began putting additions and doing renovations at these buildings, we started asking the question, are those still appropriate? Through those design processes, it's pretty amazing the changes that, once they actually took a step back and started thinking about it and realized that, okay, maybe what we have doesn't include everybody. Maybe what we need is to do some things that are different so that everybody is included in, in different ways. So we did recreate some blacktop spaces for them, but we also created some other types of play spaces as well and quite a bit more green space for them. So I think that kind of conversation is something that comes out of the projects, once, once we have projects.
Yeah, just going through summer and seeing all the activity, like the basketball and the volleyball. I think it's just seeing that and losing that, there's a value of, you know, seeing that these last few months.
Yeah, the, the intent is definitely not to eliminate opportunities, it's to actually increase them.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have another question. In the beginning, you said the water, the sewer lines, are those being relocated or upgraded?
Both, both, some, some will have to be rerouted. There's some things that are happening on that south end that we're going to have to. Yeah, if we go back to that, we're going to have to reroute. Currently, you have all, all of the water flows down that way, the way George is showing down to Laramie. There are restrictors down there close to Laramie, which as the water's flowing and builds up, it actually pushes the water back to the west and then to the north to your detention. And then it, and then it floods and makes that area really wet. So one of the things that we're going to be looking at is how do we change that so that the water actually, instead of flowing south and east, we get it to flow back to that west and north and then come around the north side of the building. So that's a big piece that we're going to really be doing as part of this. And by doing that, that's why you see an additional sort of pink line, which goes around the north end there. We're going to be able to pick up and connect to the, the appropriate lines in the street and pick up that area that's currently not really supported very well in that courtyard after the two thousand additions. And, and it's not that it was designed improperly as much as the, the rules have changed to, to allow us to do it in a way that today we'll be able to solve the problem. Back then, they really weren't able to solve it as well as, as we could today.
And, and that field space then, the north of the track will be more usable to us because it does really hold a good bit of water. And so playing on it, you know, really depends on the weather. So when we're talking about regaining some space, even though it always has been green, it hasn't really been utilized as much as it could. And so that would be an improvement too.
Absolutely, one of the studies we'll certainly do with the civil engineers is look at, how do we detain stormwater underground as opposed to on the surface? Currently, what you have is you have it detained on the surface with a, a depression. And that depression does what it's supposed to, it gets wet. If we can contain that underground in concrete tanks for its temporary holding until the, the system can handle it flowing out, that allows you to keep the grass area level with the track, level with the parking lot and basically dry. Not a hundred percent dry, but it won't, it won't be flooded. It'll be a much more usable space.
Is that parking lot going to require like a drainage since it's getting re?
Oh, sure, sure, the, the parking lot. Because it's growing, you're going to be required to have more stormwater detention. Because we're adding more with additions, we're going to have to have more stormwater detention because we're taking away grass areas which can absorb water and, and putting solid impermeable surfaces that will not absorb water. We're going to have to find a, we're going to have to accommodate that with underground detention.
And I would just mention for the benefit of the board, any of the projects, if they're approved, any of the additions will require that the parking lot be addressed and that the water be addressed. So, you know, if you were to approve a part of the project, we still have to do the parking lot, the water retention, et cetera. So those, that will go hand in hand with any of the projects.
Yeah, in fact, you'll start with that because you're going to want to have that, that detention, that water, that stormwater management piece resolved with the first projects.
One more question, sorry. In the, in the June plan, there was a buffer for classroom sizes, you know, talking to the civil engineers, there are going to be options for like buffers for adding bathroom fixtures, just to make sure if there's future expansion options.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. The plumbing systems, much like your electrical systems and your mechanical systems, are going to accommodate the additions. But there's always a factor of, of, you know, what, what if added into that? So that if you did have additional space that you needed down the road, it would be able to be upgraded as well. You, you won't, you won't necessarily have all that capacity today and have it sit there wasted forever. What you'll do is give you the ability to add on to it.
That'll be part of future discussions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One of the things we were speaking about recently was we currently have the ability to sort of close off the learning center to the rest of the school. It's a great place for PTA meetings and other events. And so it's really nice to offer that space to the community. But when you close off, then you also need to make sure to have restroom facilities so that if someone's for the PTA meeting is there, they have it, you know, right there and available to them. So, so all of those details will be things that continue to sort of unfold as the plan gets more formalized.
And George, if you want to go to that first floor plan, just so we can sort of show what Dr. Whitaker is talking about. The library, and I don't know if you can zoom in or not, George, from. Hang on. Okay, so the whole library, if you can outline that, George. It takes those three classrooms there and includes everything south of that in the addition. So what he's going to outline in red is your new library. So it's a little bit bigger than your existing library. It'd be a lot of open views into it from both that north, south corridor and the new corridor on the south side of it that goes north, south, that secondary circulation route where those arrows are. It'll have connections to the STEM labs, it'll have connections to that courtyard. So there'll be outside light coming in from not only through that main segmented curved wall there and cross that corridor, but also on the left where you see the word maker space, George, up there. That, that wall opens up to the courtyard there. So there could, you have the potential for two story piece of glass along that wall between the courtyard and the learning center. We might provide, one of the options you might have is to provide some lock off doors in different spots so that you can, right there where he's drawing a red line and then right here where he's drawing a red line, so that you could enter through that little outdoor space somewhere in that box and have the library accessible to the community after hours without having the rest of the school open. And what Dr. Whitaker is saying is that you would have washrooms within that area, perhaps maybe even inside of the library itself to accommodate that. It also allows you to take that room, which we have currently labeled special education down there. And again, as I mentioned, it's a perfect candidate for something like your, your NTDSE program that you'd like to have as part of your, your being a good community person, a good community neighbor. So the lock off might be down to the left so that that space could also be accessed after hours. So there's a lot of things that we can do, a lot of things that we'll get to through the design process with you. We don't have to have all those answers tonight, but we know that we can accommodate that stuff down the road.
More questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for your very, thank you, George, too, very thorough explanation and lots of diagrams, which really helps us visualize it. And I think we have an appreciation that this is just really the beginning.
Exactly.
And there's a lot more decisions to be made. But this is an item that the board will be taking action on later on in the meeting. And we really appreciate you coming out again and I'm sure we're going to be good friends.
Well, we would like that very much.
I'd be last, I was just going to check since Cassio is here this evening, is this okay with you, Cassio? Are we good? Looks amazing, yeah. Are you ready to take it on, that's the thing? Good.
We've been doing this for a long time and we've done a number of master plans with a number of school districts and I will, I have no hesitation in saying that your school district has been fantastic to work with. So we really look forward to the relationship continuing.
Oh, I'm not taking the compliment, I think the staff and administration should be taking that.
They have been very, very wonderful.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, really appreciate it. Okay, so moving along. We have board committees and representatives and the first one on my list here is the Ed Tech Committee, Nora.
Yep, so DeeDee and I met with administration earlier this week and just kind of went over the back to school plan that Cindy laid out in detail. We asked some good questions, we got clarification on things. Between monthly board meetings, our committees usually meet and then we find out all the details. So I, the biggest excitement was Principal Larkin mentioned we have seventy seven first graders as of two days ago. So our first grade is booming, which is great. We will have five sections of first grade, which keeps those class sizes really small, which is, I think, great. Primary has about three hundred and sixty seven kids coming in, I don't have a middle school number in front of me, but that's okay. The big middle school news is the advisory period, which is something Mr. LaPaca has wanted for a long time, I know. Where the middle school kids will come in and sort of have a, a place to sort of unpack their day, do some goal setting, some skill building, some social emotional learning, some team building. It's, it's like the first twenty five minutes of the day. So it's a nice start to their middle school day. And the tech report is, well, the, the big conversation was we have, I think, about ninety percent staff vaccinated with probably more coming, there were a lot of COVID babies on staff. So that, that hinders your vaccination at times. The tech report from Patrick was good. He's working feverishly to get a SOPA certified with the state and we're at about seventy five percent, you said. All kids at Fairview have a one to one technology, these are super cool, I like the pen the most. So that's just fantastic. And I really was impressed with the idea or just the conversation about like, should we have to flip a class or should kids have to flip remotely? Fairview has kind of, is like a well oiled machine at this point and that Mr. Healy has like tech packs ready to go if kids have to do that, which is just fantastic. The Getting Ready Program had about eighty five kids and was a big success. And we already talked about the newcomer family connections. And I think that's it, unless anybody, DeeDee, do you remember much else?
Okay, it sounds a pretty busy meeting, thank you. Finance personnel, Aaron?
Yeah, thank you, Sargon and I also, I think we met last week with the administration and we also had a really productive meeting. We discussed a little bit, continued our conversation on project funding for the master plan and sort of getting a better understanding of, of sort of what are the next steps and how, how we move forward in that process. And then we also looked over the fiscal year twenty two tentative budget, which will be then brought to the whole board in the next months, in the coming months. Or tonight, later tonight, there we go. So we, we looked that over and had a discussion about that at our last meeting. Sargon, is there anything?
No, you covered it, that's great.
Thank you.
We're flying through these, great. So PTA liaison, Diana? The PTA?
Steven was here, he spoke.
Did I?
Yeah, Ed Redd, NTDSE, that's okay.
I've got PTA next.
Okay, that's okay, doesn't matter.
Okay, so shall I do Ed Redd first, if that's what you've got?
Doesn't matter, I think Diana was saying that Steve gave the report for PTA and there hasn't been a meeting this summer, so. Doesn't matter. I think Diana was saying that Steve gave the report for PTA and there hasn't been a meeting this summer, so.
Your, your is completely different. Okay, so EdRed, yes, sorry, that's me. Obviously, in the summer months, things are a bit quieter with EdRed because the, there is no session. But there is included in the packet this month some information from their executive director, Bridget, and the highlights of how their year has gone, and also information on the schedule of meetings for this next year, their vision, mission, and goals. So I will do my best to attend those meetings over the year. I think I can do it most of the time. One of the things you'll see, it's the first meeting September 24th, is the annual kickoff luncheon. They do that every year. They start with a lunch meeting. And it is actually going to be a lunch meeting this year instead of anything remote. So it's at Cafe Lacav, which is in Des Plaines. And that's 1:33 on September 24th. And the speaker at the, at the lunch is Ram Vellavalam, who is our representative. So I will definitely be going along. Anybody who is interested in coming along with me, if you could let Drew know, then she'll actually sign up and pay the fee for each of us to, to attend the luncheon. So as I say, I'll definitely be going along to that myself. So they just added some information recently that they had some vacancies on their board. Those have all been filled. One of the main action items that they had done this, this summer was working with about 350 superintendents up and down the state was a letter to ISBE, basically stipulating that they needed more guidance in terms of the whole process of opening schools and so on. So hopefully now more guidance will be coming. And the other main project that they're working on is PTA reform, which obviously has a bearing on us because it concerns our funding. So that's it for EdRed. So who? NTDSE?
They, well, our next meeting is next week, so we weren't able to make last month's meeting. But I will have some NTDSE news for you at the next meeting. As far as I know, things are moving right along.
Great, thank you. So we're done?
Yes.
All right. So moving on to Freedom of Information Requests, I can report that there were two requests received in this last month and they were handled appropriately. Next is Information Site Items and Correspondence. Mr. Secretary, do we have anything to share?
Yes, we do. There were a few items. So the board received the following correspondence since the last board meeting on, on June 18th. A packet of information from a Fairview parent, Denise Patcik, regarding the use of masks, vaccines, and COVID protocols in the fall for schoolchildren was received. A letter from a Fairview parent, Helen Levinson, expressing concern over the facility plan and the lack of dedicated classroom space for special education students was received. We also received a thank you note from Gloria Mesky for her retirement gift. A thank you note from Carly Gross for the acknowledgement of her 15-year anniversary in the district. And a thank you note from Jeff Fair for the baby blanket.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you. So now we have public comment. I can report that there were some public comments received with the, either by email or through the Google form that is posted to the community that they can submit public comments. Those have been shared with the board. We were going to make it a priority to listen to the members of the public in advance of reading those comments. I would like to just remind the public about our Board of Education Policy 2:230 regarding public participation at board meetings. We would ask that you address the board and give your name. And your time will be strictly restricted to three minutes. We will give you, secretary will be recording the time and he will give you a 20-second warning when you are approaching the end of your three minutes. We would remind you that it seems the fairest thing to do to give priority to the people that are actually resident and part of this district. That's just a polite request. The other matter is item four in our policy. The president shall have the authority to determine, I'm sorry, I'm reading wrong one. No, this is the, oh, sorry, yes, it's hard to read this one. The president may also deny an individual the opportunity if the individual has previously addressed the board on the same subject within the last two months. Over the last two months, we've had comments regarding the hiring of the Equity Director, Equity Officer that was requested. We've also had comments regarding masking in the school. So I would remind those people that have actually made those comments that our policy indicates that you cannot speak about those same subjects again. Okay, so with that instruction, our secretary is ready to go. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Salgado. I am a parent. I have a 10-year-old and a six-year-old here at Fairview. I just want to thank you for being proactive with the tests. I think it's a great option to provide families. I also want to thank Sargon for bringing up bullying and how we as parents don't know what's happening in a playground. Because just like bullying, there's also racism. And for that reason, I feel that it is important that the school board, as well as the administration, to create and implement a race protocol policy so that staff knows how to handle those situations as well as students know who to go to and how to handle those situations. And parents are notified when those situations happen. Because in this community, in Fairview specifically, community, there's been a lot of graffiti, a lot of vandalism, all having to do with homophobia and racism. So it's important that this administration and Fairview as a whole also has a strong stand against white supremacy and should foster an anti-racist culture in our school so that all of our students leave Fairview, prepare to be global citizens, because our world is diverse. And everyone who moves into Skokie feels that our community is diverse and we should celebrate it. So why not start here in Fairview? Thank you.
Okay, I'm Angela Slinga-Gatston, and I have two children that attend here at Fairview. I was actually going to thank the board for, and the school district administration for the mask mandate, but I heard the language of recommendations and I'm kind of.
It's required.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And I just, so are you asking that we do not talk about masks?
Did you address the board on masks in the past?
I don't think I have. So I was just going to say that actually 6077 is the least vaccinated, fully vaccinated zip code of Skokie. And so, so to have mandatory masks, I think, is really important. Also, just.
Ladies, let's hold the conversation and be respectful of the person at the mic.
Is that a rule?
Excuse me, please. Could we just calm down, please? Thank you.
I, I think we're going to have plenty of time for everyone.
We are going to have plenty of time. I think you should be in order that you actually stood up to the microphone, please.
You're fine, Angela. I just want you to be able to speak without being interrupted.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that the order is also.
We're good. I think we're good now.
Okay, great.
Continue.
So thank you for that. Also, under the Fairview website, when it says to contact the board, I'm just wondering if it could be the board secretary's email address? Right now it has Gloria Meskey's. Also, just, I want to thank Mr. LaPaca for accommodating our family. We were not able to make the 12 to 3 time for touring the school. And so I just wanted to thank, like, and just proactively, you know, have more times that are available for like after-work hours so that parents can attend more things. In terms of the Culture, Response, and Equity Policies, I was really thankful to hear about the Equity Committee formed by teachers, by the PTA, and the Diversity and Inclusion Clubs. And I'm just hoping and asking that the district creates its own equity statement. I think everything else will fall under that. Having that equity statement be shared as part of the Student Code of Conduct, that's also an ask, that it's really clear that racist, anti-black, homophobic, anti-Semitic, Islamophobic, xenophobic statements will not be tolerated in this sort of conduct. And then also, what can our children do in classrooms when those things may happen? What's the staff protocol so that I can review those with my children? And then also, just, just a strong stance against the racism, I think, from the district. Just not waiting to have and publish that, I think, would really go a long way. I also believe that we can't be, this is not something to be neutral on, just like protection. Just like, I really thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for having the tests available for staff. I think that's really important to not take away from work time and things like that. Was that?
Sorry, 20 seconds.
Okay, and then just, what I'm asking for is really simple. Create and publish and share a readily accessible district equity statement. Share a student code of conduct and publish and share the staff protocol so that we can share those with our children. And then also just continue the hiring practices of Black and Brown and BIPOC administrators and staff because I think more diverse voices will help bring our community together. Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Palmer. I have two daughters who attend Fairview. I also want to thank you for requiring masks for the students. As Angela said, the percentage of people who are fully vaccinated in this Skokie zip code is about 15 percentage points lower than in some other parts of Skokie. So especially in this neighborhood in Fairview, I think it's important to, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Yes, thank you for the masks, I guess, is what I was saying. I know you've dealt with bullying in recent years and some of that came up with some of your concerns about kids maybe being bullied if they weren't taking the COVID test or weren't wearing that, didn't, weren't vaccinated. And I just wanted to name, I, I just asked my daughter about a few months ago what kinds of bullying or hate speech she had heard at Fairview. She had already told me some of these incidences, but I wanted to get it sort of fresh in my mind and see what she remembered. And what she told me when I asked her recently was similar, similar to what she had told me before. I'm not going to name all of them because we have black children in this room. And I was going to actually tell you some of the things that my first grader heard last year. I'm not actually comfortable saying it in this context, but it, there were, there was hate speech that she heard. In one case, she reported it immediately. It happened in gym, so she told the gym teacher. In another case, it happened during lunch, so she told the lunch monitor. She doesn't know the person's name, but she said it's the lady who's always there during lunch. And in neither case was my daughter ever, like, there was no follow-up from any of the adults. She told there was no follow-up from the school. And so my daughter came home and she, the lesson she took from that is that when she hears this kind of language, she knows that it's hate speech. She knows that the N-word, like, does violence to people. That's one of the things she has heard in the school, the N-word. But she, she has learned from her teachers and her administrators that when that happens, you cover it up. You don't talk about it in the community. And I think by covering it up, it just kind of allows racism to sort of, like, you know, to, to be an undercurrent that hovers under the surface and then people push it down when it pops up, but it's still there. So I would really just echo what Angela and Roxanne asked for. Have a policy, have like a clear protocol that all of the staff is aware of and that's so that students know what to do when they hear the N-word or when they hear a gay student being called a word that starts with F, which I won't say. Or, you know, there are plenty of, of hate, there's lots of hate speech happening. And apparently, it's like, it's not getting up to the administrative level. So please implement a protocol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I want to welcome you all back to school. Knows a lot going on now at the beginning of the school year.
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget that, Donna. I'm Jasmine Sabagala, and I am a Skokie resident. Although I'm not a parent here, the kids that leave this school will join my kids over at the high school. And I'm here to help to lead the process of having a response to race, hatred, bigotry, a protocol, because it's very necessary in our community for all the kids that we serve, that belong in our village, to know how to interact and to treat each other with respect. Okay, so I wanted to start with that, but before I go into my, I have something really short to share. I just want to put out there that with the COVID testing, that there are parents that work two and three jobs. And so before and after school, maybe hard for those parents that do have to work two jobs and that are single parents. Also, kids get hearing and vision tests on a regular basis in school. So COVID testing in school should not be stigmatized at all. And I wonder about the correlation between the kids who are not meeting grade level and the parents that have to work all the time. And I just want to make sure that we're not missing kids who need the opportunity to get tested and to make sure that they're not sick and they don't pass the sickness on to other children. Okay, so what I have to say here is, first of all, dear superintendent and Board of Education, my name is Jasmine Sabagala and I'm a community member. Thanks so much for requiring the students and staff members to wear masks. The Delta variant is spreading through our community. It is the best, it is in the best interest of our children to limit the spread of COVID discriminatory and hateful language and acts. I urge you, I urge you to collaborate with the staff, students, and parents to create a response to racism, discriminatory language, and hateful acts protocol. It is best to create the protocol before incidents take place. You will have a response prepared if hateful incidents take place. The students, staff, and parents will know what to expect when incidents occur. And you send a clear message to the community that every leader in the Fairview District stands against hateful acts, language, and bigotry. Thanks for your time and I hope you all have a great night and an amazing school year.
Thank you.
I'm a little shorter. I got to move this down. Thank you, thank you. All right, hi, my name is Nicole Reynolds. I am a community member. I'm also a teacher at Niles West High School. And I have children that go to District 69. It sounds like you all are doing a great job with what you're doing with, with COVID protocols and things of that sort. So I urge you to just continue that and listen to your community and kind of have the parents, those that are telling you, those that are coming here, telling you what they need, just to kind of listen in that regard. I've been to the last two board meetings and I'm glad that you all have been talking about having a Equity Director or something of the sort. I know that isn't totally in the name. But I'm just going to urge you to keep on working on that. I was actually surprised to see that it wasn't on the agenda tonight. And maybe, you know, it's just because she hasn't finished her Equity audit, which is fine. But I do think there should be an update of some sort. And I think that it's important to keep that communication going. At District 219, we have an Equity Officer. She's one of my bosses. I teach seed. And we have an Equity Statement. So I urge you to also do those things. At District 69, we have an Equity Person. We, I believe we have a statement. Most schools that have an Equity Officer have an Equity Statement. And that's kind of what's been happening. You all are doing a great job of getting that ball rolling, but it needs to continue. And just like Jasmine talked about, because Jasmine and my daughter will go to school together, as well as many people here at Niles West while I'm a teacher there. And I think it's an important thing for you all to, even though I'm not a community member here in this district, it's important to talk about Skokie as a whole, not just this little, you know, 77-student first-grade class that we're talking about. My daughter had nine or 10 first-grade classes. So we're all going to go together in about eight or nine years to Niles West together. So this is important to build a foundation now. Get that Equity Statement done now so that you're not waiting. The protocols that you've heard the parents that are living in your district asking for need to happen now, right? It's something that needs to happen. You cannot wait anymore. I, listen, I've sat back and I haven't said anything for the last few board meetings, but it is absolutely important. And you, you all need to make sure that Equity Person, that it's in their job description and there is an update to this community. I am very disappointed that it wasn't an update tonight. I'm not going to lie. I don't even live in this community. Okay, so it's upon you all to make sure that that happens for this community. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I, I hope everyone had a great summer.
Could you give your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Helen Levinson with District 72. I'd like to welcome back the teachers, staff and administration. I hope everyone had a great summer. Most of the parents that I speak with are asking for mask optionals. We understand that there's mandates that are coming down from Pritzker, so we get it. As far as the testing of kids, we do need to reach out to the community. Ask the kids or ask the parents if this is something they want to do. Kids are already under a lot of peer pressure regarding vaccinations, whether they're being vaccinated or not. I think it's really important that you reach out to the community and get their feedback on it. The other thing I want to talk about is, you know, sitting here watching the board meetings, the past few board meetings, getting overrun by individuals that are not in this district. It's really important that you, as board members, listen to the families of District 72. You were voted in by the families of District 72 and it's really important that you listen to our voices first. Children are not inherently racist. Schools are to focus on academia while conversations of ethics, morals, sexual topics and religion should stay at home. These are conversations that parents should have with their kids, not schools. When we tell children to focus on color and not character, it's the beginning of creating a bias that didn't exist. And I'm not talking about, you know, somebody was here a couple meetings ago and they said that their daughter said that she was, another kid said to her that her skin color looks like poo. I felt horrible when I heard that story, but this is not racism. This is behavioral problems with kids. This is kids that don't know what they're saying sometimes. Because they treat kids that they see that are different, differently, but they're not inherently racist. And so what I like to say that, you know, this bias that is being created through these conversations are coming up because these conversations are being injected into the classroom. And it's a new type of racism catapulting, catapulting us back into the 1960s. So please do not confuse behavioral issues with racism. They are completely different. The adults here are fighting for their own cause, not for the best interests of the children. I can tell you, many of the members here are from the Abolition Coalition, Skokie Equity Collaborative. And these are the same members. I'm glad you're clapping. These are the same members who are fighting. These are the same members who are fighting.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
These are the same members who are fighting against racism.
Excuse me, you're too.
Called a black conservative on District 219 board, the N-word. And they called him an Uncle Tom's. So I'd like to say that you need to all stay focused.
Okay.
That's enough, thank you. We'll take one more comment, please. If you continue to make this noise, you will be asked to leave. I'm asking you to sit down. Excuse me, if you want to make the comment to the board, you can address the board. If you want to have your own conversation, please take it outside. Are there any more comments to the board? Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Johnson. I am the parent of an incoming seventh grader who's attended Fairview since kindergarten. We actually, my husband and I moved to Skokie specifically so my child could attend this school. First, I'd like to thank the board to, for continuing to require the masks. The science has shown again and again and again, vaccines plus masks save lives, especially with all these little kids who cannot get vaccinated yet. Keeping the masks really is keeping children safe. And that is a very important goal for a school to have. I am also, as a Fairview parent, asking the board to focus on writing a policy and protocol to handle hate speech at Fairview. My son has heard the N-word at Fairview twice now since kindergarten. This is not something he's learning at home, he's learning hate at school. I do believe that children are not born racist. Clearly, it's something that they learn at home. As a preschool teacher, one of the things that I teach the earliest children on their educational journey are democratic life skills, the skills that people need to be adults in a democracy. And anti-racism is a democratic life skill. These children who are not learning that it is not okay to hate, not okay to use hate speech, they're not prepared for life, they're not prepared to attend high school, they're not prepared to hold jobs. If you use hate speech at your job, you are going to get fired. This is something that Fairview has really fallen down on. And I know you have a lot on your plates with the pandemic and with everything that's going on, but waiting is doing these children a disservice. I ask that the board devote time to create an equity statement, to take a strong stance against white supremacy and racism. And just understand and take this to heart, that if you are not anti-racist, you are on this side of racism. You cannot play the middle on this. It is not a gray area. Thank you.
Thank you. We have now had about 33 minutes of comments, so we will allow one more and then comments to close for the evening.
Excellent. Thank you. My name is Carrie Swan and I'm happy to be the last word. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but showing support for my friends and family. But I wanted to just thank Helen because she gave me the courage to actually get up and say something because I'm not a Fairview parent. I'm not, but it doesn't matter. Like Dr. King said in his letter from the Birmingham jail, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And I'm here to just say that. Skokie is one place.
Thank you for your comment. We're concluding the comments for this evening. Okay. So finally, this evening, we're moving on to our action items. The first item is to approve the master facility plan proposed earlier this evening. So I, we've had our discussion, we've had our conversation. All that remains is that we have a motion and a second to approve, to approve the master facility plan.
So move. A second.
Could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoi?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Boujdi?
Yes.
Okay, the master facility plan is approved. Next item for approval is the, to adopt the tentative fiscal year 2022 district budget. And to adopt a resolution to place the tentative budget on public to display and set the date for a public hearing on the budget. Mr. Fair, your budget, well, our budget, but your budget, your presentation.
Man. Sorry, so thank you, everyone, for allowing me to present the tentative budget tonight. It's going to be a brief presentation typically, and this is for either new people that have not heard the budget before, or to the new board members that have not been through this process before. The tentative budget is a kind of preview of our final budget for the year. It's a more conservative estimate of what we anticipate seeing in September. Every year, the budget does need to be approved by the end of September for the fiscal year, July 1 to June 30. Typically, we've done it in this district where we've done the final, or the tentative budget in August, final budget in September. That allows us to get final numbers for fiscal year 21, is allowing, giving better revenue estimates for fiscal year 22. In a small district like ours, any changes in the budget tends to shift things a lot more than they do in bigger districts. And we're also allowed to get, thankfully, we're allowed to get a lot more exact numbers too. So I'm just give a brief presentation of what we're looking at right now. The summary and this, the math doesn't work out, but 10.8% increase in revenues. That is largely due to the error last year from the county on the TIF refund that we received. We talked about the number of times where it was $800,000 that actually came off our books last year. That's why you're going to see a huge skew jump in our revenue this year. Expenditures are increasing 6.6% and that's for a couple of reasons. One is we're having, we have a lot of things that we actually didn't spend last year because we weren't in school, where you're in school, but there's a lot of things that we didn't pay for necessarily like a normal year. This year, there's also some opportunity through grant monies to improve our technology infrastructure, improve learning loss. We're adopting to a reading intervention curriculum, math intervention curriculum. That'll increase expenditures quick. Our hiring and insurance enrollment is still continuing as we speak. We're trying to finalize that for being the school year. And then, as we talked about in finance committee this past week, our two largest expenditures, salaries and, and insurance, the increases year to year for those two items are outpacing our revenue. We rely so heavily on local revenue and we're limited from local revenue with CPI. CPI in the most recent year being 2.3%. And that's a very limited amount that we can increase revenues by. S R funds is a huge thing for us this year. So the federal grant money that we're going to be getting, we're going to be getting about $1.5 million over the three different rounds of federal money. We actually just saw our $440,000 in S R two money deposited this month, so that'll be in fiscal year 22 books. Dr. Whitaker mentioned earlier that we're continuing to plan for the S R three money, which is about $900,000. We're hoping to, there's a certain amount of that that needs to be addressed directly, learning loss, but 20% needs to address learning loss. So we're going to submit that grant during this fiscal year. The big thing for our taxpayers is the reason that we have a fund balance is because we're able to ensure sustainability. So even in a year where we're projecting a $448,000 million, that's not an accurate number. That's not a real number, people. That's, math is bad there, it's $448,000 deficit, not million, sorry about that. 3%, what's that? $448,000 million is not a number, so I apologize.
It's a very big number.
Erase the million, because that's make believe. That's accurate, our actual budget, not the presentation. The reason how the fund balance ensures our sustainability. So in years, and we've had the same discussion year over year, we're able to do large capital projects in the building with our funds that we have on hand, a number of roofing projects, classroom reconstruction. Now, the construction we talked about tonight, we're not going to be able to do that with funds on hand, but we'll talk about the financing for that project later. The big thing for our taxpayers is that our tax rate continues to be very low, thanks to our heavy commercial property base. We have the second lowest, the 29 North Cook Elementary District, it's the same as it was last year. And we are continuing to see, through the assessment process, our assessed value of the community continues to increase. This year, it went up another 8%, which is fantastic because that 8% increase in EAV outpaces that, whatever the CPI is, which means the tax rate will again drop a little bit. A number of factors influencing this year, this year's budget, which I've already touched on, CPPRT, which is a personal property replacement tax. What that does is it replaces the tax that went away in the seventies. And because we have so much commercial property in the district, it's a large number for our district. Last year, we projected about 700,000. We actually got 1.1 million. We're waiting for that final number for this year. We are, again, like I mentioned, federal funding is a huge component this year. It's a very conservative revenue estimate in this budget. I'm going to hopefully, as we know more, as we apply, because it's a grant where we have to expend the money before getting the money. We don't want to budget too much revenue in this fiscal year. You'll see the salary and benefit increases on the, on the right. Salary is largely tied to, you know, we're hiring more instructional aides. We have the community engagement coordinator position director that we've hired. There's certain stipends that we didn't pay last year that they're actually coming back on the books this year, so that'll increase the salary number. 4.3% increase in benefits. That's directly tied to the number of employees we enrolled in our insurance plans, as well as the increases to our cooperative. Capital projects, and this is a big thing I talked about with finance committee, it's not traditionally something we've done as a district, but I didn't feel comfortable, I didn't feel it was the right thing to do, to project some kind of estimate for the construction projects without going through the process of getting more hard budget numbers on what that looks like. So I'm asking the board, after we approve this final budget, probably in the spring, when we know more numbers about the project, we'll be coming back and do an amended budget. Because it is such a large number. I talked about the intervention curriculum adoption, reading, math, which is exciting because it's something we've talked about for a while and it's a great time to do that as we've increased the intervention staff. Patrick is, we've seen the opportunity to address the infrastructure for technology programs, especially with so much remote learning last year. We want to be sure that if that ever happens again, we're able to actually be ready for that, that we weren't, but we're talking about server upgrades, firewall upgrades. So about 20% increase there, which then will then drop next year. Special ed is such a big part of our budget with NTDSC and other programs we have at East Prairie, and that's about 8% of our total costs. Our current vendor contracts, you know, with our salaries and benefits locked in, we continue to be very diligent about contracts with vendors and trying to limit the increases that we have. We have a Siemens contract that was about $81,000 for building automation systems that we brought down to 70,000 this year, just by looking at the contract and trying to scale back some operations that we might not need. This is, we're replacing the bus fleet this year, so we'll have brand new buses going out the first day of school. We actually got a couple today. There's a shortage of bus drivers everywhere, so even our bus company is having trouble delivering the buses to us. And then the end, this is the first year of the NTDSC building payment. So as, as you know, NTDSC is doing a construction project. We agreed to pay for the portion of our project over the course of 10 years. That payment amounts to about $81,000. There's a look at our five-year operating funds. Operating funds, again, is just education, O and M, transportation and working cash. That green line at the top is our current fund balance. A big part of the construction project we talked tonight is committing district dollars toward that project. We want to be sure that we're right around, as the board adopted the fund balance policy, we're above the 75% that the board adopted. So through the next few months, when we talk about financing, we talk about projections, we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and that we can, we can actually put enough money toward the project to offset any more borrowing that we need to do. This is a look at our budget to actual history. Again, I, the big thing I mentioned, I talked to the finance committee about this, is we try to be uber-conservative with our revenue estimates and our expenditure estimates. That right column over there is the budget in net every year. And mainly, we've come out ahead of, last year was, was, we didn't know what to expect with regards to revenue. We got a lot more revenue than we anticipated. It was just, it was a really off year for everything. And a couple of those years, the expenditures went over because of the timing of construction payments over the summer. Again, the next steps will present the tentative, tentative budget will be in display for 30 days. The final budget will be presented in September. We'll also have our audit report and our projections in October. I'm hoping along with that we'll have, and we talked briefly about this in finance committee, and it's from our, our financing group that's working on us, borrowing for the project. We'll hopefully incorporate that somehow into those October, October reports. Attentive levy in November and final levy in December. Again, those are very important because that's the huge source of our revenue. And then January 1st, we'll begin the budget process for next year. I know it was really quick and I was talking way too fast, so I apologize, but any questions on what we presented tonight?
Any question?
The only clarification question I have is you said the NTDSC billing payment is 81,000. That's not one payment, that's what we owe.
That's one year, that's once a year for 10 years.
Got it.
Yes.
And that money is to support the new Malloy facility that some of our students attend. So that was our part of supporting their renovation work and their updating and whatnot.
Okay, so it's one payment a year. Got it.
And NTDSC gave people the option, if they wanted to lump some, they'd do payment over the course of time. And what all that does is it's folded into our NTDSC payment every year.
Okay, and I'll get an update on building and stuff when I go to their meeting and then bring it back.
Great, thank you.
I would wonder if the finance committee had anything they wanted to add, since they did hear a more detailed presentation at their meeting? Anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
Not for me, I think that was a great summary. Thank you.
Excellent recap, thinking.
Just a question, so I feel like this is an easy answer, but last year went over budget because of COVID and all of the unusual, was that something that we're really taking into consideration this current, next year, the additional expenditures?
So we were, when we looked at last year's budget, we had a huge deficit. You know, I broke it down in last year's budget summary, which I can also give to you as well. But when you actually break it down pretty simply, we had a $900,000 deficit. 800,000 of that was simply because of the county payment. 800,000 of that was simply because of the county payment that we received early. So we were being extraordinarily, we were saying, okay, this is a normal year. Let's, we don't know what to expect. Let's plan that we're going to spend everything we do in a normal year, plus any preventative measures that we need to undertake, which is, I mean, we're talking about the ionization units in the building. We're talking about any PPE we had in the building. All that stuff, thankfully, due to federal monies, we were able to write all that stuff off of federal monies. So that projected $1.9 million deficit, it was close to break even because of that. The large portion of that was simply the timing of those tax receipts that were mistaken by the county for that TIF rebate we received. So it was, I mean, last year, for those of you that were here, I basically stood up here and it was tentative budget. I'm like, I don't know, it was anyone's guess. But we tried to plan extraordinarily conservatively and making sure that we accounted not just for our regular expenditures and given year planning like we were, but also those preventative measures that we tried to take.
And just to be clear, $900,000 was deposited into our accounts by the county in error. They did not take that money back until the next fiscal year. And so it kind of skews our budget numbers. It was such a large number. So it's confusing, but we want to keep explaining that so people understand.
It was, it was a TIF that went off the books in Culver. It was right on the border. They thought it was our money. We knew.
We would have been happy to keep it.
We knew, I told, I told the township treasurer, I'm like, that is not our money. And they kept saying, well, the county says it's yours. I said, okay, but let's, and then a month later, they were calling me, hey, Jeff. I'm like, oh, great, that's fantastic. So it'll skew our numbers for another two years. That's great. But, you know, we dealt with it and we're able to address it and, you know, that's, it's that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that factor skewing numbers plus the fact that our income and expenditure last year was just so out of the ordinary because of COVID. It's, it's hard to think what a normal year is right now.
In the time last year, we didn't know what the federal monies were going to be that we're going to receive. Like, that's another component, so.
Now, with construction going on, there won't be a normal year for the next couple of years. Okay, thank you very much. If there's no more questions, we will put it to a vote. With the secretary, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right. Can I have a motion of second, first? I didn't do that.
So moved.
Second.
In that case, can we call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoy?
Yes.
Great. Well, I vote yes. I'm sorry, I lost my track there. Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Okay, the tentative budget is approved and will be on display for the next 30 days. The next item is approve employment of personnel. In closed session earlier this evening, the board discussed two appointments. One is a life schools teacher, other is the director of community and student engagement. Those are the two positions we'll be voting on this evening. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those appointments, please?
Motion, our second.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, I vote yes. Ms. Lenoy?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes. These appointments are made. Next item is to approve the release of certain closed session minutes. After discussion in closed session, it was agreed that we would open the minutes of May 4, 2021, April 27, 2021, February 16, 2021, January 19, 2021, and December 15, 2021. Can I have a motion and a second to release those minutes?
So moved.
Our second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Minutes are released. Next item is to approve the destruction of the closed second recordings from February 19, 2019 through to July 16, 2019. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The recordings will be destroyed. And last item is to change the board meeting currently scheduled for September 15 through to, over to September 22. And I understand this is in order to allow that full 30 days for the budget to be displayed before the board approves it at the next meeting. 15 would be too short. We need to go to 22nd. So is there any issue with that? Does anybody have any?
Just make sure that it's updated on the documents that have been going out, because it still says 15.
It will be updated on the website and posted there as, you know, as required. So can I have a motion and a second to change the board meeting, the next September board meeting from Wednesday, the 15th to Wednesday, the September 22nd? So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and that concludes our action items for this evening. So are there any items for future consideration?
I have one, if I may. I think that it's time to have NTDSC visit this board and provide a report on the programs that they provide for our students in the township. I feel that there are misunderstandings out in the community, and I think it's important that the board understand our partnership with NTDSC and what is offered to our students, both at satellite schools, at the Malloy Center, or their staff coming into our building to provide services to students. So if that's something that the board would be interested in, I would like to arrange that in the next month or two, depending upon their schedule and if they might be able to attend.
I think that's a great idea. If you could also give us, while you're talking about NTDSC and what the services they provide through Malloy, and if you can talk about the middle school students and the primary school students that, the partnership that we have with the East Prairie.
Sure, we could do an all-encompassing report on special education, both within the district and our, our community partners and NTDSC. Yeah, a fully inclusive report of everything.
Thank you.
That sounds like a really good idea. I think it's definitely important to bring our newer board members up to speed. And, and I love to hear about the wonderful things that NTDSC is doing myself. So, yes, that sounds like a great idea. Please go ahead. Okay, thank you.
The only item I have, I don't know if it's an item or not, but I feel like the policy on sharing public comment is confusing between what are the parameters and what are suggestions, right? In terms of larger district community people versus district people.
The parameters are in the policy. There is no specific parameter about allowing people within the district to speak as a priority over people outside of the district. The law is that anybody can come to the meeting. You could go off to LA and speak at their meetings if you wanted to, or up to Alaska. Doesn't, doesn't matter. You can speak whenever you want. However, it was a polite suggestion that if we actually have numerous people that wish to address the board, a polite suggestion was that District 72 should be given priority. That's the way it was put out.
Thank you.
Anything else?
There was one other thing. So we've taught, we've heard several times from several community members about their children hearing hate speech. And I know that this might be addressed through findings in the equity audit, but I am curious to understand what is our teachers, or what is our policy around handling that? What, you know, are teachers supposed to do something? Are the, what does that look like? The management or the handling of such reports made to teachers?
It's very straightforward. When a child reports an incident of that nature, or whether it be something, you know, of a physical nature, they should report it to a school adult. They should report it immediately. The school adult could be any school adult. It could be a principal, it could be a teacher, it could be a counselor, it could be a kitchen staff member. If there's someone that they feel comfortable with, and that is our goal, that every child has at least one adult that they feel comfortable sharing sensitive information with. It's our goal. I'm not stating that it's, you know, necessarily 100% the case, because I don't know that right, right now. Reporting it in a timely fashion. The staff are well-equipped to manage student disciplinary issues. But things that rise to a level of the nature of what these parents have reported to us should be reported directly to a principal. There should be an incident report written up about the matter. The principal will then conduct an investigation, which our principals do. That investigation should conclude in either a restorative circle for children to come together and have conversations and work through their issues. It could result in disciplinary action. It could result in a finding that maybe there was a misunderstanding. But that's the responsibility of the principals, and that's what our principals have been directed to do. I have asked that going forth, that items of a nature of race, or bullying, or harassment, intimidation, any, any of the above be brought to my attention so that I'm made aware of it. Typically, school superintendents are not intimately involved in those types of matters, but I want to be. And I think one important loop of this whole process is going back to the child who reported it and having a conversation so that they know that they've been heard, that they did the right thing by speaking to an adult, that their parents be contacted to let them know that their child reported something, that we're looking into it, whatever we can share with them. We can't share the outcome of every disciplinary matter with parents. It's private. It's student privacy information that we can't share. But part of it is making sure that all of the parties are communicated with, so they understand that it's being addressed. I think that that's probably where we can improve, is to make sure that the child who reports the incident is spoken to. They understand that they've been heard, that their feelings are validated, that they're supported. Whether, you know, their accusation or what they heard was exactly what happened or not, doesn't matter. We want to encourage those discussions with adults. So there is a protocol in place. We have been reminded that we need to reiterate our process, make sure that everybody's on the same page, which we absolutely will do to start the school year. And I have full confidence that if things are reported to us in timely manner, that our staff and our principals will address it.
So a couple, maybe a year ago or a year and a half ago, we went through, the board went through extensive discussion around bullying and, which led to some really good work by the staff and, you know, administration around bullying prevention, documents and policies and procedures that we have now put in place. All really great work. Does any of that need to be amended to include hate speech, or is that all encompassing?
I, I think that that is absolutely something that could be re-looked at. You know, again, I'm talking off the cuff tonight, so I haven't reviewed those policies today, and they're not fresh in my mind. But certainly, there is a zero tolerance of hate language, of physical aggression, of weapons. There are very, there's a long list of things that are not tolerated at the school. And I think our students and our staff need to be reminded. And the opening of school is a great time for that. We're going to have all of our students back in person. And so we have a wonderful opportunity to rebuild community, bring students together, but also reinforce our standards. And that's what we're going to expect our staff to do.
Yeah, so I think that's a wonderful way to approach that. I love the idea. If you could also, maybe when you're looking at that to refresh it, maybe also making sure that it includes anything that's, you know, anti-homophobic language.
Of course.
Used in the school.
Of course. It's, it's all-inclusive, Shereen. It's inclusive of, of all people, all genders, sexual orientation. I mean, that's what they're talking about with an equity statement. It's all-inclusive. It includes, you know, students who are coming from low-income houses and don't have lunches. It, it's a very, it needs to be broad, and it needs to be inclusive of all. And I'm glad you raised the point about what we did with our work with bullying. We do have an anonymous tip line that students need to be reminded of, so they can put a tip in. We also need to let them know that if they provide a tip, they need to give us enough information so we can investigate something properly. Sometimes we get tips and it's so vague, there's nothing we can do about it, because it's anonymous and we don't know who to go back to. But, you know, we can remind the students of where to find that on our website. We can remind them of how detailed they need to, you know, make their description of what's went on. And that's the way they can report something if they're into school adult that they want to go to. One thing we struggle with is when we get reports of things that have happened, but it's months later. That is very hard to track down. But, you know, we would still rather know about it than not know about it. But it's just very hard to investigate when something is, you know, several weeks, several months old. So if children aren't willing to talk with us, then their parents have to contact us immediately.
Niles West has a lovely sign outside that says, hate has no home here. I think those are the words. And is it possible for Fairview to do something like that for the first day? I mean, I know it's short notice, of course, but given all the, you know, hate stuff that we've been experiencing over the last year and a half or so, I wonder if the board would consider putting something that's inclusive, that really emphasizes the one Fairview by really denouncing hatred and racism. And I don't think anybody here would say that they are racist and they want, they, they, you know, align with it. Nobody would ever say that. Nobody believes that here. So if we have a sign like that to really take a stand and say, this is who we are as a community. We stand up against hate. It has no place here. Along with our welcome sign. To me, that sounds like a, a nice way to start the school year. Was there a sticker here in the back at the entrance too? I saw there was like multiple stickers or something that's already been out and posted on the door, the entryway?
So that, I think what you're speaking of is the Skokie welcomes everyone signs. That was sort of a village-wide through Skokie, I think through Skokie Cares. And so we posted those signs because they were, you know, a part of a village-wide effort, and people had the yard signs in their front yards and schools posted them, library, et cetera, et cetera. So that was sort of a village-wide effort to come together as a community and indicate our welcoming of everyone.
If that's, oh, then I have just a couple of housekeeping items, if you like. The ISB conference is in November. It will be from November 19 to the 21st. That's actually in-person this year downtown. I will definitely be going. I'll be contacting Drew about going to that conference again, if anybody wants to come along. It is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Nobody ever goes on the Sunday, but it's just a Friday, Saturday. And I will also be representing the board in terms of the, what do they call it? The legislation delegation, yeah. So if anyone wants to come along, that'd be great. And before that, on Wednesday, September 22, which I just realized is our board meeting. Darn it. Well, it was going to be the ISB North Cook dinner, but obviously we previously engaged, so no one's going to that then. Okay, so that was all I was going to mention.
I'd like to add one more item for future consideration. If Cindy can just kind of go over the plan in either September, October, after, you know, joining with the teachers, what the plan is for the educational loss at Fairview is, you know, off of last year. And I could, so that, you know, the focus of the school and what we're doing to help students, what Fairview is doing. And I know there's a plan, we've talked about it, but just to kind of overview it, what the plan is to help these students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, there anything else to bring before the board? Okay, in that case, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 9:33? Our motion?
Second.
Would the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boosdy?
Yes, I didn't, yes.
Ms. Lenoy?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Ms. Downing?
Yes.